All right, here we go. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Bourbon Board of Selectments of Order on April 5th. Please stand up and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get too far along here, I wanted to officially welcome our two new board members, Josh Golden and Joe Tom, here on my far right. We will miss Rob and Mark, but it's always good to have new people, new energy, new viewpoints, come onto the board and welcome and looking forward to working with you. I give you each the opportunity to say a little something if you want to introduce yourselves or if you could pass, because I know I just gotta drop that on you with no warning.
Hi, this is Joe Tom. Glad to be here, hoping to help out with Tom's business and help folks out so hopefully with the next few years. Thank you.
And I'm Josh Golden. Thank you for putting me here and I hope to work with everybody and keep this town moving in the right direction.
Great, thank you guys. All right, any amendments to the agenda?
I do have one, sir.
Yes.
Under consent, for lack of better, we have recently gone through a settlement with one of our buyer leaders and we're asking you to accept the settlement as it was advised by our town's attorney.
You want that out of the consent agenda?
Or wherever you believe it's appropriate.
Is that, if it's a settlement, it's, so is it done, this was settled according to the terms that the board approved, right? Okay, so no, that wouldn't be executive session.
You've already gone through the legal, they've added signatures and we want to be able to deposit that into the appropriate account.
All right, I'm gonna make that seven point two, which is before the consent agenda. Any others?
No.
Okay. All right, so we, the first, the first meeting after town meeting each year, one of our first course of business is we need to elect chair and vice chair of the board. So I would entertain nominations for board chair.
I'll make a nomination to elect Kevin Dave as board chair.
Any other nominations?
Really? No.
Okay, the motion, the nomination for, the only one is for myself to continue as chair. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Four zeros a vote there, I didn't vote on that one, just for record keeping purposes. Okay, nominations for vice chair are...
Would like to nominate Rich George for chair.
I'll second that.
Do you accept that nomination?
Sure.
All right, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Rich George serving as vice chair? Any opposed? Rich abstained, so four zero. Excuse me, fighting off a head cold here, so please bear it. All right, public comment section. If anybody has something, a comment they wanna make about something, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, it's going to be brilliant. Just come on up to the table, move the microphone over and identify yourself and have at it.
Hi, Debbie Alver from Chicago, it's been during a few years. I just wanted to say how well the town meeting went, I thought, over the weekend. I really appreciate the dedication, but I'm a little shy, so I don't know if I can talk about it much, but I just wanted to mention that. And also, I know we're gonna be talking about hiring the town manager today. And when I think about how do you incorporate community involvement in that, I know we just can't have a bunch of people randomly commute on the hiring board, but I was thinking that maybe a good approach might be for those community members who are interested, maybe you could answer a few key points that the board wants to know before you decide who would maybe be involved, whatever those key points are, whether it be a hiring experience, whether your expertise is in leadership or project management or local government experience. But anyway, I do hope that we come through tonight hearing that the community members are able to be involved with the hiring process.
Can I name again, please?
Debbie Alver.
Thank you, Debbie.
Anyone else here for a public comment?
I'm Phyllis Brandon, Brooks, I Drive. Because we'll be talking about the town manager position, and currently we don't have a communications position, I would just ask that you, part of your process, if you look at how you'll be communicating to the community, you know, as the process goes along. Don't know what that looks like, but I just wanna make sure that you remember to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one response to that. We actually, we have already hired on a kind of a trial basis, somebody to do a lot of that communication stuff for us. Kimberly Gardo, she's kinda gotta figure out if she likes doing it and if we like her, but I think we already know that we like her, so hopefully she likes doing it. And so, she's got some skills in that area, so she stepped up and has gotta help us with a lot of that communication piece.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment?
I'm Heather Roy from Hallowell Road. So when I think about what a successful process looks like for hiring, I really look to the school board. I think they do an amazing job outlining the process right from the beginning and what it looks like at the beginning, all the way through, what each step is. They communicate at each step what's taking place, and then after that step has been accomplished, they communicate the outcome of that step. So I tried to print that off to be able to bring that here tonight, just to give you a visual of what that looks like, but I'd be happy to send that along, just so you have something, you know, to see. I think that they do a really good job communicating the process. I'd love to see our interim town manager perhaps review citizen input or applications. I know that when I was on the hiring committee the last time, we had to, you know, write a paragraph about maybe what we would be able to bring to the table if citizens, which I hope, are gonna be involved in the process. I know that Debbie spoke at the meeting, meet the candidates night? I'm trying to talk fast, I don't want to say. So she, and the things that she outlined about what her experiences in her job, I was immediately thinking that's a person who needs to sit on that committee. She's, you know, really well versed in that. So, you know, while I think I would like to sit on that committee, when I'm listening to her talk, I'm hearing that she has really great skills. Debbie, I'm sure is not the only person in our community that does that in her professional career and would really have something valuable to bring to the table. Michelle's another one that I think of. So I'm really happy to hear what you just said, Kevin, about Kim. I think Kim's attention to detail is phenomenal. She's been part of a lot of the things at the school that had to do with all of the tech stuff, and I think she does a fabulous job. So I know this is something that I really beat the drum about, and I think that Kim would be really great in that role, so that makes me really happy to hear that. And, oh, this is the last thing I'm gonna say. So these are great, I'm excited to see all of this detail. I know that when we do minutes and agenda, well, not agendas, but when we do minutes, it really represents the votes that are taken or what's happening. I have seen recently that when the agendas are posted, packets are also posted of what all the documents that the select board's gonna see that night or the planning board is gonna see that night. Because we don't take detailed minutes, I think that those really serve a good purpose if we're trying to create any type of historical record, so that if a resident is interested in looking back at something, they can put a subject into the search bar of the website, and even if there aren't minutes, if it catches a keyword from any of those documents that are part of agenda packets, you can at least get closer to what you're looking for to be able to go watch that meeting or review those documents. So I would really appreciate if that continues, where agenda packets are what are posted along with the meeting notice and not just the meeting date. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's not really this big of a surprise. Jill Gaston Gays, Stackpole Road. First, I want to welcome Mitch as interim town manager. I think this is the first meeting you've been able to attend, so welcome. And welcome to the new board members as well. And thank you again also for attending candidate night, it really allowed us to get it in sight, so I appreciate that, thank you. I was trying to think of public comment for town manager, and I guess my first comment is, it's really hard to comment on something that you don't even know what the thought process is. So I felt like I was trying to make assumptions and second guess what you guys might be planning or what you guys might be thinking, which I think is a little inappropriate and disrespectful of you guys, because, you know, I'm not trying to make assumptions or, you know, second guess what you guys are planning.
No, I think, I think the idea tonight is, you know, we're gonna have a discussion about what that process should look like, so this is an opportunity for you to kinda, you know, offer your views on what you think the process should look like. And it might trigger a thought or discussion amongst the board and be included in the process. So this is, it's a kind of a preemptive opportunity for you to say, well, I know you're gonna talk about the process tonight, and I would like it if the process included A, B, and C.
Okay, all right. So then I guess to start with, you guys have already been through this process. So I think it would be very good for you to reflect on what went well and what didn't go well. Because I think that can help you, since we're doing it round two, to maybe not repeat what you might perceive as errors. I know the town certainly has what they perceive as errors, but I really don't know what the process was specifically. I think it's important to try and find somebody who has some experience. Kathy did not have experience in a town manager select board combination, and she did comment a few different times in meetings how she thought it would be similar to town council, and it was completely different in her mind. So I think it would definitely be important to try and find somebody who has some experience and knowledge of this format of government. I definitely want you to try and find somebody who's qualified and not feel like you're needing to settle or be on a timeline because Mitch's deadline is coming up or, you know, we're just trying to fill the body ASAP. I'd much rather have it be filled with a proper person. I would also like for you to either limit your executive sessions or at least let us know a little bit more what you're going in for, whether it's round one of interviews or reviewing resumes, instead of just saying personnel matters. It's hard to kind of follow along and know where we're at in the process. I also had some comments about, since we're talking about hiring people, don't know if it's proper or not, but the part-time town hall employee. One of the thoughts that I think was a good one that people had was perhaps trying to find maybe a retired person who has the knowledge and can come in and also help to train the staff or answer some questions that they may have, as opposed to hiring also somebody with zero level of experience. And maybe it's more of a, just a trainer that comes in instead of necessarily filling a quote-unquote "part-time, long-term" position. I also think that it's important to consider maybe limiting window hours. We don't have to be Amazon here, where we're always open. I think it's perfectly appropriate if they, you know, try and determine what their busiest times are. And I know I spoke to the staff and they're like, we tried to kind of make notches based on the hours and some hours you're just too busy. I'm like, yeah, that's when you write TNTC, too numerous to count. You know you were super busy then, to kind of get an idea of when you're busy and not busy. And I'm also super excited to hear that we do have a communications person, because definitely the minute notes don't tell you anything. So we definitely need some sort of recording to be able to keep up, especially busy families who are trying to bathe their kids or get home from work right now, so, thank you.
My name is Neil Berry, I'm on Stackpole Road. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but a couple of things, some things. One of the reasons why I'm here is to help you decide whether I want not a campaign to repeal the town manager form of government, because I've never been convinced, nobody has convinced me that we should have changed our form of government in the first place. I had a chance to talk with Shannon Floyd at the town meeting and asked her if she and Pam ever had any trouble running the front desk or whatever you call the counter during the week, and she said no. And I asked her if she had needed really any help, she said, well, Ruth, the administrative assistant helped when he needed, of course, and filled in the blanks, and they had no problems running the town office. So I would encourage you, if you proceed with a town manager plan of government, which I assume you will, that you hire a town manager that's willing to do the basics of what the administrative assistant did, which is whatever it takes, the people across train to do the job, and which would probably alleviate the need to hire an assistant or whatever you're gonna call this person you're looking to hire.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, but don't take this as a precedent.
So I didn't realize that we were gonna talk, like, this was when we, I thought that residents were gonna get an opportunity outside of this to talk about qualifications. I thought to them it was just process, so when you...
It is, it is.
So I did, can I just say two quick things?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. So one of the things that was suggested, I don't remember where it was suggested, but was to break out what the level of expertise looks like for that salary range. I think Jean said that at candidates night. So that people have a realistic expectation of what, these are the skills that we can get for this price range of a salary, right? We all went into the conversation last time that, you know, eighty thousand dollars was gonna get us what we were looking for, and we know now that's not the case. And so I think if residents have a realistic expectation of what the skills represent versus what that salary represents, then it isn't gonna be so, perceived so negatively when we do, because I assume we will have to be paying more money for the skills that we really need. The other thing that, now I want some trans-... Process, oh, this is the one thing that I would just really love for you to consider when we are there, is that if you look at the superintendent and you look at the school board, the town, the superintendent is the person who is educated, experienced, knowledgeable in all things related to that. And she advises the board, and then the board makes decisions off the recommendation and the advisement of the person that is the superintendent. And I would really love if we were in a position where that is exactly what our town manager and board looks like. You all have other jobs that are your full-time jobs, and we've until now tried to pull people that have qualifications in certain areas, and, you know, but we all understand that you all don't do this as a full-time job. And so the person who does that, that's educated there, that has that knowledge and experience, can now come in and advise the rest of you who are volunteering in these roles that I'm sure are wonderful at what you do, but you don't do that, right? And so when we're really considering who we're going to hire, please keep that in mind, thank you.
I think we all like that.
I probably shouldn't say nothing, because Neil stole most of my thunder, but I guess I would just reiterate, it might be Stackpole Road guy. I would just reiterate what Neil said. When I was on the board, I was really ever far a town manager. I still think we should have been staying where we was. But one of my main concerns is, I don't wanna go the same path last time. Last time, it failed miserably. I don't wanna go up that path again and be where we were eight, nine, ten months ago, again. I do agree, and I think we should make sure whoever we hire, if we're gonna go up this town manager path, that we hire somebody that can run the front counter. That's where we need the most. We always have needed the most. We shut down the town office on Friday, and it was only half a day, because we had election. We never shut the town office down because we had an election. Maybe once for a real quick reason. I understand we were gonna shut down the town office again to do the end of the books and stuff. We never had to do that. So all of a sudden, we're shutting this down because we don't have the right people. I don't wanna go down that path again. I don't wanna make it so hard that the people coming in have to go across town, register cars, because we don't have anybody there to do it. I think the girls that are here have been doing a good job. I think they've been doing probably better than a good job, because they have kind of learned on their own. I think if we had somebody in there that could kind of help them along, as was mentioned, they wouldn't be in the position they're in. Maybe we wouldn't have been in the position we're in with new people either. So just keep that in mind, let's not go down the same path.
Any other public comments?
Did I use up my three minutes?
No, you always wanna hear what you...
I wanna get my money's worth.
I'll take it, just kidding. I'll buy his minutes.
All right, I'm gonna consider public comment closed, before I have to think of something else. Joking, of course.
Wasn't there my last minute?
All right. Next, item five, reports. Fire chief, report for us today.
The good news is, it's tough to follow that, but it will be brief, it will be brief. I've met with the town manager already about sort of the positivity from the town meeting, which I appreciate. I'll be meeting with Janet tomorrow to start punching in the budget numbers and where we go from here. You might have seen a new sign, a wildland smoky bear sign for the firehouse. It is wildland fire season, we got called to one today, it was sort of a good intent, but we're following that, the gear's ready to go. I know the rain is coming this week, so that'll help, but the ground cover's been pretty dry. We started looking over the contracts for capital improvement for the SCBA, that sort of stuff. May 1st is an increase, of course, so we're trying to have that settled before May 1st, which I believe we can do that. In-house, we started talking about a committee for updating our apparatus, so some of that capital improvement plan will be a multi-year plan. Half of it passed this year, we'll be looking for next year for a little bit more, just for updates for like the quints and some of our older pieces. That's where we're headed currently, so that everyone understands that. Also, we've checked in more important, the avian flu, the bird flu, still in three different counties, have been watching that to keep you guys abreast of the situation. Nope, I'm intended. And I still get updates on influenza, so the people flu. And that's a little update, but there's only ten people across the state that's actually hospitalized. So currently mild, according to the Maine CDC. Other than that, we're still doing budgets in new season. Any questions for me? Welcome, John. As always, you can email me, call, stop by the station, bring an iced coffee, whatever you want. It's just a bonus, John.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if Tom is on here tonight, right?
I'm prepared to provide two updates.
Yeah, please go ahead.
The department head wanted me to remind you that he's still working with the state on both the Swamp Road and the Quaker Meeting House roads. If you recall, those were supposed to initially go through engineering and design, and your engineer at that time has since passed away. But that is, the firm's still working in it. And in this period of COVID, they changed some of the standards and requirements, so that what, which was going to be a culvert is now probably gonna be a bridge.
So we're talking about the two culverts that we have grants towards?
Right.
Okay.
And he wanted you to be aware that he's working through that and going back to the agencies, so that they will, even though there may have been a change in the labor versus preformed concrete put in place as opposed to concrete in place at the time, there's a labor saving issue, but the cost of everything keeps escalating. So we're attempting to lever those, so the project will be split into two years. They can only do one this summer, and then they'll do the other one in the following summer.
Any timing issues with the grant for that, if one of them gets delayed a year?
We're hoping that the lack of appropriation for the second one will be considered for ARPA funds, because you're at this point not displacing muddies that have been appropriated already. And if it sounded a little fuzzy, it's because even the agencies themselves have not been totally clear as to where this is gonna end up. But we do think that both projects were gonna get underway and be done this summer, and it has been a change. The second item that he's been tracking is he had a request for proposals for the Public Works vehicle and plow that is out there. And there are really only two that we deal with. And what's interesting is Freightliner and Viking Seavey and HP Fairfield. One provides strictly the plow equipment from the front, the other two provide the chassis. The chassis both came in at the same price and they combined it with the plow. And actually, what came out was that Freightliner slash Viking Seavey's proposal for combined everything was two hundred and thirty-one thousand fifteen dollars. If we were looking at the second bid, which was HP Fairfield, for the same truck and the same plow system, that was two hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. And we need to have your nod, because like everything else on the supply chain, we have been told that this will not hold very long. And if we go up to another bid again, you will likely get a good response at about a ten to fifteen percent higher rate. So I'm sorry to put you in the corner at the last minute, but this is information that's important, and I think that the board should acknowledge that the testing of the waters has proved that we can save some money if we act now. And quite frankly, the Freightliner chassis, which is a hundred and forty-three thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars, will have the biggest price hike if we delay. And that was the same price regardless of who's supplying it. And we'd be lucky to get it if we don't. So, I'm there, we have checked, we have checked the marketplace, done our diligence, and the tough part is, what do you wanna do?
It would be nice, in a situation like this, to make this decision this rapidly for Calvin to be present.
And he had made a commitment that he could not be here, and I was willing to bear the consequences of that.
Did all of this information just transpire in the last twenty-four hours?
It actually transpired starting last Thursday, and then Friday, going through. And there was very little time involved here. We did meet with all the proponents that came to the town offices, and that's the outcome.
So the first bid, can you, just the totals of the two bids again? One was two thirty-something, the other was two fifty-something?
Bid A, which includes the truck and the plow, for two hundred and thirty-one thousand fifteen dollars delivered. The second bid was two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. The trucks meet the specifications, the plow meet the specifications again. In this case, the plow is the same, regardless of which it goes to.
So what's the dilemma, I guess is the question? I mean, not necessarily the dilemma, I get the cost aspect, but in terms of the two of them? I mean, if they're, you're basically saying they're identical. What is there to ponder?
I believe that the chassis came in slightly less under Freightliner, and that's what made up the difference. And our recommendation is to go with, and that includes, by the way, for both of them, a trade-in of the old vehicle, and includes the trade-in.
So are you, are you essentially looking for authorization to enter into a purchase agreement?
To proceed and award the bid and make the purchase order, so that we can lock in that price and save our taxpayers some money, but at the same time, take advantage of the fact that if you don't do this, it's gonna come back to wall up. it's gonna come back to wall up you in another year because they won't have something available for you to sustain.
Yeah. And the, the, just, the 231 is, uh, within the 242,000 authorized at the town meeting. And technically, but you know, we, we typically will always take capital expenditure things like this to town meeting. But, um, and so we're authorized to raise 220,089 dollars. I'm sorry, 21,911 dollars. If for some reason we wanted the more expensive bid, we could still do that because, because we're authorized to allocate money out of capital reserve funds as long as they're used for the purpose that the town voted to put them in for. Um, but we wouldn't need to do that with the first bid, 231, because that would come in, you know, about $10,000 under what we.
It's the same, it's the exact same requirement in both cases. Yes.
And delivered.
And ironically, this is for a November bill date, and we will have it just before snow.
And we, we've done it this way in the past. Like we've, we've typically authorized Calvin to go ahead and begin the bid process even bef- before we don't have authorization. That's always worded, you know, subject to approval at town meeting, which we got. Um, so now he's ready to roll. This is, this is what he's looking for, is authorization to enter into the purchase agreement and, um, so.
And Viking Seavee is the one that built our last one when, yeah, I think we were on.
That's the more expensive one though, right?
Viking Seavee, not the, there was.
It's, it's less.
Oh, okay. What was the, what's, where does the more expensive one come from?
Fairfield.
Oh, okay.
HP Fairfield.
Okay.
Uh, as a side note, um, if you know where HP Fairfield is located on 95 North, you have to go way up to get equipment and, and, and pieces, whereas Viking Seavee is Freightliner. Much more local, so that means turnaround time for repairs, especially in the winter, could be of value to the citizens.
Okay. Oh, well, did you, did, what was the, you said this was the bottom line after trade-in?
Yes.
What was that, what did he know?
Uh, they estimated approximately $10,000 taken up from the trade-in. Not any more, not any less. So they were very specific in written form about the trade-in.
Okay. And in Calvin's opinion, is it worth trading it, or is he wanting to keep it for a parked truck or whatever the heck? He typically does these things. Okay.
It's one of the other ones, John.
We've, we've been down the parked truck route.
I think that is a parked truck.
Just wanted to make sure.
I got, I got a feeling that might drop parts.
There's been many discussions. This is what I thought.
I think I heard about it at CIP.
Yeah. Sure, Mark. All right, um, does somebody, somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'd make a motion to authorize Calvin, the road commissioner of Durham, to enter into a contract for the Freightliner for $231,015.
Second. Todd, seconds. Any further discussion on that? Call it a favor. All right, 5-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank Kelvin for that quick work.
Yeah, he's always pretty motivated to get his new trucks. All right, is that it for a road commissioner report?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, moving on, uh, this is gonna stay with you, Mitch. Update on the code enforcement officer search process.
First, my understanding is that the team that was put together prior to my arrival included the town manager, gentleman from the audience, and, uh, we also had Calvin. And, uh, in all fairness, uh, when I came on board and I reviewed the applications, I also saw one that I'm very familiar with. I asked the members what their thoughts were, and to a T, they weren't, they wanted more follow-up with one of the applicants. The others had varying degrees of capabilities. But what you had assigned for, not you as a board, but what the town had assigned for was a person who knew land use codes, could work with the planning director, and actually assist in the process in the field so there'd be a much tighter fit between land use ordinances that are being developed or, in this case, executed and enforced. And this individual actually has coordinated the planning board in another community, including solar arrays and other items of a manufacturing nature, if we ever get into that. Residential being the biggest and more frequent use. So we're meeting with that person on Thursday at, uh, 9:30 AM. And if in fact, the team is satisfied with that, I will take that authority and go forward and attempt to negotiate what that person's looking for and, uh, report back to you the end results of that. The allocation is there, flexibility and authority is there.
Good, yeah. All good, okay.
And I'm anxious to get Calvin out of that position, although he would be training and coordinating, and that would make a very strong team for land use and for the planning board.
Yeah. Any questions on that one? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move now into the discussion of the, um, search process for town manager. We have kind of three topics listed here. We can take them in any particular order. Um, maybe I'll kick it to you, Mitch, if you want to do kind of a, an overview of like, how you've approached this at other places and how you, you know, recommended approach and, you know, whatever you think.
And, you know, by the way, you complimented members of the audience who felt there was a sequence to be followed, uh, because I think that's just as important. In the previous communities that I've worked in, uh, what I generally have done is what we're doing tonight. What are your expectations? Remember, you've got statutory requirements of a town manager. And you go to FMSA 30A, you, you can look at those in detail. In its most basic sense, you are looking for a policy implementer since you are the policymakers. You are looking for that person who understands, uh, a horizon of information in municipal government, who can take leadership, and if they don't understand the problem, does the research with the appropriate staff members to get the su- the solution to the problems. And as such, starting with your expectations is as important as looking at the standards or the statutes that say what is expected of a town manager. And I just want to make sure that you, you give me that because I want to build that into not only whatever job description we have currently, but also highlight that in the advertisement. Now, there was some comments today that we've heard is that, uh, there are expectations on the part of some citizenry that that person will fill in as needed. If that's what you're looking for, then we need to know that. But I caution you because in every one of your audit reports to date by your auditor, they have indicated segregation of duties between front office and back office, purposely to assure that you don't get into a situation where Mitch has been with you for 25 years. We trust him implicitly only to find out that he's being served notice in Connecticut because he's been embezzling all this time doing something different. Those are things you never known to know then. So segregation of duties in my mind is something I feel obligated to report to you about because when you hired me, I was very specific about some of that going forward. What you do is your business, but I'm just sharing with you that the segregation of duties is, is extremely important, especially in a community that has got a lot of growth pressure to it. And there's a lot of transactions going forward, and it isn't just the front counter. It's in fact the person who is going to be your chief executive or administrative officer, and you are the board of directors of this business. And the business of local government is more than just tagging the numbers that are coming in and issuing registrations. There's a host of many other things that are involved with that, as you have experienced over the years. I just want to make sure that I understand your expectations and are there aspects of the town manager job that you're not clear about or that you want to be very clear about so that I don't misrepresent in our advertisements or in how we get people coming in as applicants and are being reviewed for the strengths and weaknesses that you're willing to deliver. That's the first part of that. And yes, it should be an open and free dialogue, and whatever your expectations are, please put them on the table so we know about it upfront. It's not good to have those expectations, not say anything about it, get to the point where we're offering candidate X the job, and then someone says, but we expected the following to have happen, and that doesn't look very good to anybody in the process.
Let, let, open it up. Anybody have any thoughts they want to offer there?
I did give you a sample, and it's, yeah, basically jack of all trades, decent nun, problem solver, compassionate, strong-willed, listens carefully, and adviceless. And any other adjectives you want to throw in? Plumber, electrician, you know.
I, I guess, Mitch, I mean, I know you haven't been with Cal Durham very long, but I know you've been doing this for a lengthy number of years and have quite a bit of experience. So I guess my question for you is, moving forward, you know, in our first attempt at this, um, you know, we were, um, we hired outside consultation, but it doesn't, that, that tells you maybe who to hire and what you're looking for for an individual, but it doesn't necessarily tell you the details of the day-to-day of what the expectation of the town manager actually is. You don't really see that if you're on board. So I know there's concern about the administrative part or our, excuse, not even the administrative part, or the assistance from like a town administrator, is that what we have in the past? I know you just addressed that. Um, is it commonplace, or is that something that we should be looking for? Or sh- um, is even a possibility to have somebody that's floating in between like a 40% town administrator role versus a 60% facilitator role as far as policy is concerned?
I know that in many northern communities from here, and I say northern, Augusta North and in that area, there are towns with smaller population, equal population, and larger populations that do it both ways. Being totally upfront. In one particular case, I'm thinking that there's one individual who's not only the town manager, but is also the town treasurer, the finance officer, the tax collector, and the town clerk all at once. And.
They don't do animal control?
Only at town meeting time. But, uh, effectively, that's realistic for a small town because auditors also are, if you will, reverting to what the standards are in the industry.
Sure.
They recognize limitations in small towns. The move towards fraud has become a big issue in government. And how to protect from fraud is part and parcel of a fiduciary.
Right.
You are elected in part as a fiduciary. So to answer your question, can a manager fill in the front office? Absolutely. We can make that part and parcel of that. And maybe the notation in the audit is not of a concern right now. But you are under a great deal of pressure, uh, for growth, and you will continue to be so as far as I can see, even if it remains strictly residential. The number of transactions will continue to grow accordingly. And one of the worst things in the world that I have experienced as just one person is when you have to tell a taxpayer why you're not open today for business. And we have to do that tomorrow to catch up. It's unfortunate, but that's the reality. And it's death by a thousand cuts. You don't see it today when you're gonna open up. But over a period of a year or two, the audience at a town meeting can get very aggravated based on their experience. Well, I got there four minutes after four. Where were you? Well, we were trying to catch up, so we closed it out early. So we understand the communication part of that. But the reality is you're moving towards a professional who effectively should be providing the oversight of what takes place in the front office as opposed to checking up that they themselves are doing their, their work properly and val- validating the receipts coming in, deposits and so on. No reflection on, on the good staff you have, and they have come a long way in a short period of time. But they still have questions, and they're building their confidence. From my standpoint, you already know how I feel about segregation of duties.
Yeah.
Do you have to have that? I've already told you that the auditors will dig you on that, but it doesn't necessarily mean you fail the audit.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying you guys still consider us a small town. So I don't know with that, where that, where that small town versus medium town versus small to medium town to the large town relative.
All right, then I'll give you an example. There is no definition of that because I work for a town of 860 people who passed away. And effectively, their town manager full-time, town manager former government, they have a town clerk, they have a finance officer, they have segregation of duties. The town manager never goes to the front counters to do anything because they have to certify. And they go through and review weekly and monthly all of the, uh, payables and payroll, sign off on them, and they're signing their name to that. And the auditors have picked up on the fact that there is a segregation of duties. 860 people is the population of that community. Yet 4,100, you are, you are getting through with the fact that you had a great administrator who could step up and, and do some of the counter work. But that administrator is responsible for all of the other things as well. And that's why I, I'm a supporter of the segregation of duties as well.
So can I ask one last follow-up?
As many as you want.
Thank you. So I don't want to overbelieve this guy's time. Um, but by that rationale, you know, there's no definition of small town. But what, you've been in our town for a little bit, um, and we've heard concern about the town manager role and so forth. Is, is that the appropriate role as you see it in this town moving forward? I mean, I know we're under pressures, et cetera, et cetera. Are we at that transition point? Are we making the right call? In your professional opinion, because you have a lot more time on the pond than I do on this thing.
I don't mind sitting in that hot seat.
Okay, thank you.
I think that you are in fact right on the table that is balancing with a seesaw. And I think that 4,100 people is going to be history for your community over the next five to 10 years. I think the numbers are gonna go up. Your land use ordinances, it's very clear from what I heard on Saturday, among other things, is don't tell us where we can't and can live. Don't regulate where we can't and can live. We want to be the town. And that's gonna still encourage some growth. Family members, the family members, and quite frankly, people from out of state places who are buying up land and wanting to build that Taj Mahal to get away from the cities and just work down here for the weekends or the weekdays. So my professional opinion is you are tipping that almost on a weekly basis. There are times of the year when it clearly tips against you. Year-end, when we have to wrap up the books and set, and remember, we've been operating for three months now.
Sure.
By approval, and that's normal, but you have to go back and reset the, the budget for this year going forward. And as time goes on, the person that you hire is going to be telling you a little bit of what I've been saying now.
Thank you.
What's the, um, the breakdown of, uh, duties that you're doing now in regards to, I'll say, public works, by department, and then oversight of, I'll say, the front office or the office itself? What, what type of breakdown is that from a part-time perspective?
Four.
I didn't mean, I mean, you mean by four minutes. What, what do you see the breakdown as really?
As a percentage of my time right now. Uh, and I come in in the morning, and it's Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursdays. And I try to adjust Thursdays to kind of a midday because they're open too late in the evening, and I think that's great for the customers. But I'm usually here by 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, and I work about 2:30 in the afternoon, 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Mondays and Tuesdays. And I'll adjust accordingly as I did today. I started at 1 o'clock, I think, and I'm just working straight through. But to answer your question, I would say that my time is approximately 50 to 60% answering the questions or working with our finance and our town clerk on how do we close out with trio and start again. And, and this has been very intense. Last week it was, and the town clerk was, I hope I've got everything ready for the election on Friday and then going into the town meeting on Saturday. And what I found is I spent that much time building camaraderie and an atmosphere of success and support. And I think that's something that is very critical when you're trying to be a team. And I think that's something that is very critical when you're trying to be a team. The other forty to fifty percent, depending on the week, I get reports from our fire chief and I also get reports from Calvin in both of his roles. And now that he's starting spring, it's pulling him away from, from his public works and he's spending a lot more time with code enforcement. And so I can see, and as you all know, Calvin is very diligent in making sure his T's are crossed and his I's are dotted so he doesn't miss anything. He doesn't want to fail. But when you overload, that's when you potentially make mistakes. And so to answer your question, there are things that I could be doing in the office. Tonight, after four weeks, I finally got to look at some of the bank statements just as a double check, but I do check weekly payroll and payables. So is that, that spot checked going forward? I hope I'm giving you some understanding.
Here you are. No, no, uh, uh, thank you.
What do you, let me ask you all a question. And it's no reflection on any of the administrators regardless of their title over the last ten years. Do you as elected officials fully understand your roles?
I, I think so, but I think without, for the periods of time where we haven't had a town manager, what's, what's missing is that kind of, I would say, cross-departmental organization and process management, like what's happening in all the various places. And without a town manager, as somebody accurately pointed out earlier during the public comments section, you know, that's not what we do, right? We're, we're, that's, we're not the experts at managing the town resources across departments and, you know, making sure that, you know, CIP committee is getting together or that, you know, something else, you know, from a, especially from a human resources standpoint is happening, your appraisals are getting done or whatever. You know, with, without a town manager, somebody who's overseeing all of that, it forces us to fill in those gaps and play that role. And it's, it's not good for the employees and it's not good for the town and it's not good for how things work, you know? I mean, I think we've done the best we can, but it's not ideal. And I think to your point, that the town was at the tipping point where a part-time board that meets twice a month for a couple of hours, you know, cannot adequately oversee a town with a multimillion dollar budget and, you know, over a dozen employees and local, state and federal regulations out the wazoo, you know, that you need to contend with. So it really requires professional management. And so that's, you know, and that's kinda where I am on this is where, I think we've known our role. I think we know what our role should be and we want to get to that point where we're acting as the board of directors, as you put it, and not, not the chief executives actually running the more tactical day-to-day show.
That's a very important statement, Mr. Chairman, and I wanted to find out if all of you feel that way. Because it then allows us through the process of interviewing to determine the personality and the skill sets of that individual to meet today's requirements and do they have the capacity to grow with the community for tomorrow's needs. And hopefully, and I say this carefully to everyone, whether they be here in the audience or out there in TV land, if you get a person who's committed, you will be very fortunate to keep them three to five years. And then they will move on. It's the nature of the beast. But in so doing, there's a supply chain problem here. We are material in the sense of human beings who are trained to some degree to do these jobs. There are not many who are available. And what we're seeing now, quite frankly, are people who are cross-trendy. Town clerks are recognizing they have a lot of that administrative capability if they have the personality to be the CEO. And they already have the inner workings of your community. And you're gonna see more and more town clerks leave their positions, get the additional training they need and it's often on the job training at other small communities to start out. So where does that lead your community? The possibility is that you may get a well-trained and experienced applicant who was not a town manager, but was a town clerk for many years. And then you need to find out what was their sole responsibilities and authorities. Do they have a three hundred and sixty degree perspective of the operation or it's a very tunnel vision? I mean, I'm preparing you for a bad market, a competitive market and a good market. But what I'm hearing is that there's a commitment to go back to the role, statutory role that you believe the town manager should be doing along with what you folks are doing as policy managers. And to me, that's a team effort.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, for those of us that we hear when we add the initial discussions, that was very much along those lines. Like we, we wanted the board to do what the board should be doing and a town manager to do what a town manager should be doing. And to get a lot of that town manager stuff, which has gotta be done, whether you've got somebody with a title doing it or not, you know, some of those more tactical things have to be done. But having that town manager, it's, there's a strategic element in looking down the road, pick your head up over the horizon versus get the weekly task list done. And I think that's, that's something we never really had with the town administrator former government was the, you know, pick your head up, look over the horizon, you know, what's coming at you and what are the opportunities that maybe you could take advantage of if you had somebody. So I, I don't see the town manager as a super tactical work the desk position. I'd, I'd rather hire somebody at, you know, twenty-ish dollars an hour and work the counter than have our town manager that we're paying forty-five, fifty dollars an hour working the counter.
And I know Mr. Berry with all due respect does not see that transition and he's questioning that. And that's a good thing that he's questioning that. Your comments are very well taken. You want someone who can work with your planner, your code enforcement. You want a visionary because the reality is it's gonna take a visionary to help control the growth in your community going forward.
Right.
It doesn't take a great mathematician to recognize that you have a quality of life endurance that you want to retain. And anything that gets diluted may spoil that in the future. Yet at the same time, and so asking for that not to change, costs are going up over the same assessed value, although assessed value is a whole nother issue.
Yeah.
And the bottom line is that you're gonna be facing the cost of doing business, whether you have that strategic person in that corner or not. The real question is, are you preparing yourself for the future? And I think that's what some of the things should be for your manager going forward. So is there anything on that example that offends you?
Josh, I, I feel like you kind of raised my expectations of what we, to get and then shot them right down. And so I guess my question, and I don't wanna jump ahead too far. With the, the salary we've budgeted or the town that's budgeted, what expectation, what level of expectations can we expect? Uh, you know, I'm not, from what I'm hearing and coming in, I'm not expecting we're gonna hire somebody with your level of experience at, at the rate we're, we're going to pay. Are we looking at someone who's gonna have no experience, who's gonna be new? Or is there somewhere in between that we can find? Because I don't wanna take this step and do all this work and come back disappointed in the end. And so I wanna go in with an expectation, with a reasonable expectation of what we can expect.
Good. The answer to that is as follows. Over the last eighteen months, and this has been a very unique history globally, not just for your community, I have watched managers leave their position and go to smaller communities. But their experience is what they were carrying with them. The communities programmed what they thought was the market. And in two communities that I'm thinking of within your locale region, Andruscogon and Cumberland, they have budgeted sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars and found they were actually settling at eighty-five to ninety-five thousand dollars. I'd be perfectly blunt with you. That's the, and that's before your benefits going forward. My observation from Saturday, and it's only a one-time peak to your community's history, is there's a lot of demand for quality in this community. And people just don't wanna fill the slot for the sake of filling the slot. And if you cannot compete to get quality personnel, you may face yourself with the decision to go back to a vote and change the form of government. But I'm afraid you're not gonna get someone for fifty-five and sixty to seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars. We'll be lucky. And I'll caution you. If someone is from another state out of New England, I'm not going to recommend them because they're gonna use you as a move to at their, at your expense. They will stay two to three years and you may garner some great idea. Maybe that's worthwhile. But they'll be gone in three years' time for something bigger in the state or in New England. It's very competitive. I don't wanna disappoint you, but I wanna be realistic. It's gonna be a tough haul. If we can get twelve to fifteen good candidates and added that top candidate, yeah. That's what you want. And you may have to pay a little bit more and explain to the public at your next town meeting that it costs us more in the marketplace today. And the marketplace is driving all positions, not just private positions. There are three town clerks that have left their position as town clerks in the last month and a half. I don't know where they're going, but I'm sure we may see their names. Have I answered your question? I don't wanna leave you negative, but I wanna be realistic.
Well, that was the answer I was expecting, but I, I just wanted to hear it. So I appreciate it.
So is there anything on the list that you want me to scratch as an expectation of the responsibility? Cause I'll work with that going forward and then we can talk about the timeline. And then we can go from the timeline to the what might be.
Is there a current job description?
If there is, I am bound to have, but I'm sure there may be-
I sent it to you today.
Okay. Thank you. And, and by the way, I'm not trying to defend the chair's position on if he's represented, what the cost would be to their manager, but the reality is, is a supply chain issue. And we've seen it in trucks among other places.
So what's, what's in the budget for twenty-two is basically carrying forward what the previous town manager was in there at, and that's eighty-five thousand year plus benefits. I don't see any being arrowed at Jake Allen.
If there's something you wanna add, please let me know. What I hope to do is on Thursday, when I come back in, working with the CEO position, I hope to take your ideas and then over the weekend I will try to pull that together. Based on the rest of our discussion, I'll start placing the ad, but I wanna make sure you see the ad first.
How realistic, I actually do, I hope that I do that one question. Preferred, like master's degree in ten years, local government experience. Is that, I'm worried that would be too, a big filter for, for some maybe attractive candidates.
You're right. Bottom line is you're gonna have to be flexible. You're not gonna get a jack of all trades, an ace at none. You're gonna get some who's got some willingness and quite frankly, under strength to be able to put up with it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a good point. You know, just to, for the newborn members, just to give a little context on being our previous town manager. You know, we knew, you know, we had a lot of things that we wanted our town manager to be, but like Mitch just said, you're, it's rare that you gotta get somebody that checks all the boxes, right? So, um, we knew that the person's strongest suit was not finance. But when we hired the person, we had, the other town staff was, had a lot of experience in that area and had worked for the town for a long time. But shortly after the town manager came on board, um, the town clerk and the deputy treasurer, um, left. And not necessarily because of the new town manager, but, you know, they left. And so all of a sudden you've got a new town manager and two new people in the town office and absolutely zero institutional knowledge in the office. So that's, um, and as Mitch said, they, you know, say what you want about the previous town manager. She did a great job hiring people. She, she hired two, you know, killer people in the town office and she hired us an awesome fire chief. So, you know, that, we'll take that and, and build on that and go forward.
And I don't wanna sound like I was saying anything negative, but no, no.
So you, you caught my attention on something earlier Mitch, that, um, with the grow, growth of the existing employee base, our clerks, how can we wrap that into, you know, I'll say, you know, like you say, we might get somebody for three, four, five years in this process, but it, I guess it's something more for the board that as we maybe grow the clerks, they've, they've definitely been a fast learner in this, this, this space we've been going at lately. You know, is there opportunity to grow them into, rather than lose, lose the knowledge base, but to actually roll into somehow into, um, a, a training plan for, for the existing, uh, employees to be able to step up maybe a way a day, you know, no different than you would get, you know, junior engineers to medium engineers to senior engineers, you know? Uh, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here, just as a way to create our own little growth plan at a, from a, from a personnel standpoint. You know, I agree with all of these skills, you know, they, they have to be a jack of all trades. It's, um, um, that person. So it just, but something else to think about as we move forward here to keep that in mind.
You raise a very interesting point. How can you be the next in job and hiring the people in the office? They're dedicated, they're sharp as a whip. And now we're building an environment of confidence. And they need to know that they're doing the job right on a daily basis. And if they have a question, they should ask it. They shouldn't be afraid not to reveal that they don't know. And we're going through that process now. To your specific question, the fact that you are allowing them to grow may allow them to take on additional responsibilities that you hadn't thought of tonight. But in two or three years, they'd be an opportunity going forward. Right now, job satisfaction is being surpassed by job compensation. Things may settle a little bit over the next five years where compensation and satisfaction are equally important. But you also have two people who can see their jobs, wanna do their jobs and they are customer oriented. Sometimes they have to come into the office and they need to get their steam off the system, but that's normal.
That's okay.
And what I can see, you have very competent people and we wanna continue to support that atmosphere. Getting the right manager who comes in and is not a dictator, but is a team player and helps them see the future and the goals that they need to. And your, the most recent experience with your town clerk, coming through her first election in the town meeting, she's right on time. She asked the questions. And she sometimes just needed to have someone else validate that she's heading in the right direction. You need a team builder and you need a person who can communicate to the community that their skin in the game is to do the job correctly as best as possible. I'm not a hundred percent and I'll falter a lot. At my age, I forget a lot too. But I wanna make sure that we're getting this off on the right foot. I'm extremely pleased with what you've said so far about your town manager position. But I wanna move now to the timeline and at any point in time that questions come up about what you're looking for, let's deal with it. Because I think in the final analysis, you wanna get the most you can for the money you got. The timeline as I see it, these are just tentative. If in fact you finish agreeing with the position description tonight, this weekend I get the papers ready for, for the advertisements, which I want you to all read here carefully. They're not gonna be the biggest advertisers, but they're not gonna be a little one inch by one inch. They're gonna be reasonable and you're gonna spend about twenty-four to twenty-five hundred dollars. They're going to be reasonable and you're going to spend about twenty-four to twenty-five hundred dollars covering the New England area. I don't go outside of New England, it's not worth it. We will get that in hopefully to you by the twelfth of April and then start receiving resumes after the twelfth of April. By then, you'll have had, I hope, your committee established and then you go through the orientation. The general orientation will be in public. But I, I want to talk a little bit more about the committee itself and its responsibilities and confidentiality that they run in my conversation each year. We effectively would look at top candidates in the first week of May, possibly even schedule interviews for the first interviews from the tenth to the fourteenth of May. Now, this is aggressive.
Yeah.
And it can slide, but if we don't start now, there are going to be others out there fishing as well. The second interviews could be as early as the third week of May through Memorial Weekend. And if we do get that person who fills the slot, you could very well find that this is ideal time because if they're family, their kids are coming out of school shortly thereafter, they won't disrupt their school, they finish up the school, they get to move, settle their house or whatever they're doing, find a place here and come in and by Labor Day, they're back in the saddle. So, the timing is very good and I think the market will treat you better this time of the year as opposed to starting in September. If you agree with that. The interview process, I'll simply point out that I'm extremely pleased and have had experience working with elected bodies that have also put on their, their interview team, staff and citizens. The ultimate responsibility, however, lies with you five members. My job is to try to get the best we can, do the research and make sure that they cut the mustard and that they are capable of doing the job that you expect. Whether you have one, three or five citizens, you have to make that decision. I would recommend that in my experience, when a board is faced with pulling together an interview team, they put a notice out to the public and not someplace where they can't see it, but out there that says, "We invite you to apply and we will have an application." What makes you special? What are you bringing to the table to this interview process? Versus, "I just know what I know and I know nothing else." You know, you want to get something from that person sitting at the table. You should also have anywhere from one to three staff members. It could be one at echelon level of department head, it could be two at, at, at the rank and file level or vice versa. But you want some of that input because they have to work with that person and they want to give you some feedback as well. The problem is where you have eleven, thirteen and fifteen people, herding them into a room with candidates can be an interesting challenge, to say the least. So, the numbers have to be with you, but I would recommend put a quick application out, let people apply. Interview them, have a workshop, even a Saturday.
And interview the people that want to be on the committee?
That's right. And give them a chance to understand the process and give you an understanding of their capabilities of what they're bringing to the table. I don't care about the hard question. I want to make sure that we have people who are involved and engaged so that the end results at least was fair, equitable and serves the community. And if you agree with all of that, I'll work on an application for the citizenry. Let them fill it out and I'll give you the questions that you should be asking the person. But I would put that right on their application, let them answer it. And call them in, interview them, and it may only be a ten to fifteen minute interview, but from that you'll be able to then say, "Here you go." And by the way, you can decide, but I would pose this to you. Any individual who applies to be on the committee to assist with the select board understands the confidentiality. And that starts with the fact that they're being interviewed in an executive session because it deals with personnel.
Yeah.
They may be a volunteer, but at this point, they're working on behalf of the taxidermist.
Yeah, we've actually started at advice council, um, when we appoint, you know, whether it's planning board members or whatever, or even any committee member, we do that in executive session.
Give me your feedback. Do you decide them on this? What am I hitting the targets the way you fully believe we should go forward with the process?
Is that, is that a realistic timeline?
It may be too, it may have to slow down a little bit, but the longer you wait.
You get into summer.
Yeah.
You don't want to, the summer, it would be, it would kill us.
I wanted to make sure that the name of Durham name is out there in the minds of people before June. You've got to do that.
So, you said, you were thinking, get the advertisements published essentially a week from today? Is that what you were saying?
The advertisement for the resumes of citizens, staff members who want to be on this hiring committee.
Oh, okay, that would be a week from today?
Yes.
Okay. When, and when did you envision the advertisement for the actual position going out?
Week of the twel, uh, the twenty-eighth of, uh, April.
Oh, okay, all right, I missed that part. So, by the end of April, the posting goes out, right?
Certainly by then we should be, start receiving them. My goal is to get the advertisement for one, your citizen committee, out there right away. That's easy to do before they have to fill out. Secondly, to create the advertisement for the manager position. And I'm going to ask you to have a workshop because otherwise we have to wait to the, the next meeting, which is what, three weeks from now?
Right, so, yeah, I think one thing Mitch and I did talk about is that probably your standard, um, two meetings a month is probably not going to get it done through this process. So, we're probably, I think, that, we're actually, this is an early meeting for us. Our normal meeting night would have been the twelfth, so, um, I, well, when we get to the end, we get that. But I'm going to probably propose that we still meet the twelfth. So, that we can move forward on, on this stuff. So, um, should we talk a little bit about, or do we need to at this point talk about committee composition and how many of these, how many of those? Or does that come after we see what kind of response we get or what are your thoughts there?
I'm going to hedge my bet and suggest the following. That you as a board agree that a citizen input and staff input is important. That's a statement that needs to be made.
So, does anybody not think that way?
That's fine. No, I think that should be the way to go.
Okay, I think we have consent on that.
Step by step. The second part will be that at a minimum, you want at least one, but are looking to have three citizens on the board and a minimum of one, if not three, staff members on the board. That would give you eleven, plus your interim manager, which I only conduct the meeting, you do the interviews.
Yeah, I was, I was, I, I had myself a little old chat here. I was thinking, uh, Public Works, Fire Department and somebody from the office and yourself, right?
I have no voting this whatsoever.
Three, two or three citizens, depending on what we find for people that are interested in doing that.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of along those lines too.
It's kind of where I.
Hot numbers are easier to break ties with. Eleven is a lot and chances are you may have to meet in a different surrounding. This may not be big enough, I don't know.
Or I'm also thinking, you know, Zoom thing too, because you may get candidates from afar that may not travel, at least for the first round.
If this is going to be in New England.
If it's going to be first to second.
If they can't take the time to drive over.
And that, that's fine, I, I just, I'm just, you know, thinking.
We did do that last time.
Did you do that last time?
But we had, it was a different COVID environment.
Yeah, yeah, very different environment, but that, that's fine. The full in-person works too, but.
At a minimum, and then you can go to three on each and that way, you're, you're, you're not just picking one person. You may decide two or three from the citizen group and for the others. And if we can get the citizen application that's at. And let's assume you get a dozen, that's a lot. But let's assume you get a dozen. Then I would recommend that Saturday morning, starting at nine, in every fifteen minutes, we take a ten-minute break at the end of the first day, we'll go through and interview the citizen. I will create for you the basic questions, although the application itself will probably be the key point. And you want to see the individual, how they respond to that, and then you can decide from there. And it will be done, I recommend, in executive session, it's a personal matter. No one likes to be told that they're not going to be appointed, but at least we're going to give them that opportunity. We're not going to advertise they're not chosen.
So, are you saying that we interview everybody that submits an application, no pre-screening at all?
No. Get every citizen in here who makes an application. And if you get an overwhelming amount, then yes, maybe we need to be prepared to that. To be fair, you have some very strong-willed interest going on, let's, let's pay attention to that and give them the opportunity to sell themselves. Now, we're talking about the board, not all the candidates.
The committee, yeah.
The committee, the committee. Different issue. When you find that committee, I, I will ask the chair to pass them the, take the numbers of qualified, capable applicants and pare them down further. I will make a recommendation too, but I want you to look at every application. Unfortunately, you're going to get the applicant who says, "I used to be a teacher" or "I used to be a carpenter" or "I used to be a police officer" or "I used to be this" and "I think I have the administrative skills to take on that task." In some cases, those are pre-screened out by the committee right away. They never even make it to the interview. And understandably, they don't meet the basic elements.
We're talking about the town manager job now, right?
Yes.
I'm going to be all that long. I'm going to be more excited. Committee and the manager's job. So, I, I, I thought you were going to say, sorry, the teachers weren't qualified.
No, 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 I'm going to be careful.
Sorry, Josh.
No, no, I, I was just going to say, I agree with this, this citizenry, that should not be pared down. That we should make every effort to interview everybody, I think that's important. And so, I think that's a good point you made and I'm happy you said that.
I have never experienced, and this comes from our discussions, I've never experienced a committee of eighteen and twenty-four. Your one town, the committee that I was being told about was a school board committee that represented three towns. And I understand why they had to have a large number. But I think if, at, after eleven, it gets to be an unwieldy issue and process for committee members. But that's my recommendation, you tell me what you want.
I, I was just curious if, um, we'd entertain going the role of, kind of how we did the fire chief and so forth, where there's maybe at, in the initial stages, a couple of members of the select board, the town man, the interim town manager, some employees and the rest of the panel consist of the townsfolk until we narrow it down.
Really not have the full board involved upfront?
Yeah.
That's, I, I mean, my experience in this, in this type of hiring is somewhat limited to executive directors of nonprofit agencies and that's how we did it. And I think, I think it helped, uh, in, in, in our case, you know, there, there were some of the, the less vocal and I don't, but, but I think it helped get different views maybe out there and heard. Uh, I don't know if that's, that's sort of the best. Would, there'd only be five of them, there were nine of us, but.
Do you have any thoughts on that suggestion?
Let me give clarification. We're talking now about the review committee?
For, for, I'm, I'm thinking the, like, the first round of interviews.
Yeah, so, the, the review committee would, um, it would essentially be that. It would be a review committee made up of maybe a few members from this panel, members of the town, members of the town staff. They would do all the, for lack of better words, initial legwork and interviewing, get it down to the finals and then, um, take it from our side of the house and, and a few of the, um, selected from the, um, original panel.
I just wanted to be clear. Given my short exposure to your community.
Yeah.
Let me separate this so that we're clear. The applications to be on the committee should all be reviewed and interviewed. Anyone who took the time to write out the application should be here in front of you. And that's, that's my opinion. Once you've selected the three citizenry and the three staff members and yourselves, I have been experienced in both cases where the committee has said, if someone is a tradesperson and wants to now be a town manager, they really don't have that experience, put them in this pile.
Hold on a second, are you talking for the, uh, committee members or are you, are you talking for somebody who's applying for the actual job?
Applying for the job.
You're applying for the job of the town manager?
Right.
Right, I, I, that would be up to the committee to, 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 to flush out that.
We need to make the distinction because my understanding is if we all agree that any person who applies to be on the interview committee
Yes.
gets an interview here, then that's half the battle, we're done.
Anybody not agree with that?
I, I, I think as long as the numbers are, I mean, if you're talking, you get eighty, eighty people, then, then I might, I might disagree, but if you're talking about something that can be done in a day, then I would wholeheartedly agree.
I think, I want to go back to Rich's question though, because I think Rich's question was whether all five board members should be in, involved in the round one interviews or perhaps just two or three? Is that, is that what you're asking?
That's exactly what I'm asking because I, I think, I think the more input out of that initial panel that we get from the outside, you know, outside of this board is more crucial than the input from this board upfront. So, let more of the citizens do a lot of the legwork and have some of their questions, um, and answers in, in the interviewing process, so they're feel more comfortable. And then they can make a recommendation to the board of who they want to move forward on to the next round.
So, did you have two separate citizen panels essentially, you have one doing initial, that way you get more.
Well, I think that our rich initial board would make the recommendation moving forward and I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that's more of how you see maybe the school board operates, where there's individuals more so in the town, it's not the whole legislative body of the school board conducting all of these.
Yeah, from what I understand, because I talked to, uh, the school board chair at length about their process to learn about it and, you know, there is, they have a lot of people involved upfront in that initial screening in first round. And then, I don't, I care exactly how the process works, but eventually, and it's not the whole school board involved upfront. Eventually, it then gets, you know, once some sort of a cut or is made, um, and then it's the, I think it's, I think it was like three, three finalists, whatever, that's, that then goes to the school board and only the school board. The citizen involvement stops after the first round. So, the citizens are involved in kind of like the screening and first round interviews. They provide some input, the board members that were on that, part of that first process, they're providing input too. And that committee is kind of the, call it the finalist selection committee. Because that's what comes, that's what comes out of it. And then the finalist interview with the school board.
Let me pose a legal question. Unless you have a quorum, two of you could do that and it's not an official meeting. And if it's not an official meeting, then you have the citizenry doing the initial screening. I think there could be an argument that it's not official group, it wasn't an official meeting, yet you went in and screened ten applications out of the twenty application pool. I'm concerned, because I've never had that happen before, where unless you have a majority of three, which allows, which requires under the theme of access, an official meeting.
I think we need that authority to make the final decision, that's why I think the board should be in the, the final decision.
That I agree.
But the initial screening of the candidates can be pushed forward to the board and there can be a separate committee and I don't think that requires, uh, uh, at least it has in the past. I don't think that requires.
I think it's, I think it's in the, um, I think it's an appointment of a committee by the board.
Would the chair and the board entertain any public comment on this? Because I'm curious, I've never come across this before, this is new to me. And I want to, I'm trying to balance your authority with the wishes of the townspeople who want to be interactive in the process. Can we get some input on that?
I got, I got a question because we went around a couple of times here, so I just want to make sure I got it together, so. So, we're saying. So we're saying, initial committee made up of, of folks from the town and a couple board members to go through the initial round.
With, with myself.
With yourself and, and, and possibly some of the department heads to go through the initial round of, um, interview process. And then move that to a board only, um, for the finalists.
Board and citizen, or just board?
Well, that's what I was, that's what, that, you know, that's where I was kind of, I just wanted to.
There's no, the decision is the board's. There's no scenario where the citizen gets a vote.
Right, exactly. Well, that's, that's why I was, you know.
That's why I think it's more important to have more than upfront.
But is it a three-stage process is what I'm getting at, or is it just a two-stage process?
Oh, yeah.
So, that, that would be citizen with the board to talk about finalists. I say citizen might be plural, um, but just, and then you go to the final with the, the board has down to, say, three people at the end, okay, and you need, like, well, which one do you want? And that'll be the board's decision at the end.
We've done similar things like this with fire chief in the past, two fire chiefs, at least on my tenure. Or other things. We, we've used a panel, and then ultimately that panel would make the best recommendation to the select board, and the select board would interview the finalists. And we would, we would basically elect, in, in a sense of what this panel put forward to us.
Yep.
That consisted of the townsfolk's employees and, and maybe one or two of us.
And we'd only be looking at the ones that were put forward. We wouldn't be re-review, re-reviewing anything.
No, because they're charged with bringing us the best.
Well, yeah, the three, two, at least two of the members of the board would have.
Would have been, right, no, I get that part, yeah. Maybe quote-unquote citizens are just guiding, guiding light through that, yeah.
And realistically, the more interviews we have, the longer it's gonna take. The longer it takes, the more interviews you have, the more likely people are just gonna say, "I'm not interested in this." I mean, is, what's the right number in your experience?
Well, I think the initial, just not to cut you off, sorry Mitch, I think the initial work by that board, weeding out, let's say you have a hundred and twenty applicants, getting down to that final ten, and then expending those interviews and only those interviews.
If we have a hundred and twenty. Something you haven't told me about there.
Well, you know, to that point though, first time around, there were over forty.
Yes.
Applications, and not all of them, not even close to all of them were viable, and even, so there, it is, whether you call it three-stage or two-stage, there's kind of like a, an initial screening, like, are we even gonna get to a first interview?
Right, right.
With this person?
Yeah.
And then, and then, um, so I could see, and I, I think this is the input from the public on the school process. I think they're involved in the screening, or, um, but anyway, they, um, they're determining, okay, who's gonna be in first interviews, and they do that, and then there's a, there's like a system they use to provide input and rank on a rubric, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty spelled-out, like, formalized process. They have a consultant that's managing all that for them.
How many people did we get on the first interview cycle for the, um, town manager?
As far as applications?
Application.
Well, applications, it was, uh, like I said, it was over forty, I wanna say forty-five. And, um, we only, we only interviewed, what, six? I was gonna say seven. First interview, six or seven. I think we identified seven, one of them said no by the time we called him or interviewed him.
Yeah, I thought it was.
And then out of that, there was, there was only one that was, that we even felt comfortable taking to a second interview. And if we hadn't, if we hadn't, you know, and, if we hadn't felt comfortable taking her to a second interview, we would've, like, gone back to the well and started over.
It was over.
It was a rewrite the rec.
Go through it again.
Okay.
Will the, will the board entertain any citizen comment? We've had some very good comment at the beginning, but I'd like to figure a field, because you proposed really the beginning process, but you also started talking about the end process. They may be involved as citizens at the end, they may not be involved at the end.
That was why I was asking about how many applicants we got, that, you know, how many of these rounds do you do? And if you only end up with three to begin with, you know.
Well, that's true, I mean, I guess in many scenarios.
You don't need the big committee any longer.
You have to kinda adjust based on what reality happens, you know, like to.
Yeah, no, but even if you got three, put them through that panel, and if the panel thinks they're worthy of going forward to meet the entire board for being considered to hire, then so be it. If that three fails at that committee level, then nobody goes through, we're back to square one, as far as I'm concerned. But if it's alright with the chairman, I, I mean, we got five people there, I mean, five minutes, we can cap it, because obviously we have more stuff on the agenda. I don't have anyone on one, but it's all.
Does anybody object to reopening public comment?
No.
Okay, um, we reopen it, um, three minutes max per person.
I won't even take that off. So I've been on hiring committee process for this, and I've also been on the hiring committee process for school. Um, and they're, they use two board members. I sincerely appreciate doing this in the reverse order. I'm completely fine with the end result being delegated to just the board in that second round of interviews. I think the more that the, the residents can have input in the beginning stages to, to narrow the pool, I'm completely on board with that. Thank you. I sincerely appreciate that. Um, just talking about the numbers that Mitch was throwing out there. If we needed a quorum, three board members, three employees, and three residents is nine. So then we're not in, um, an even-number scenario. Um, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good speed comment.
Um, I was thinking the same thing. A quorum is three. So if we are worried about it being official every step of the way, then if we have three select board members, then that's a great idea. I guess I should disclose, I'm a Durham resident, but a Mechanic Falls business owner, so.
Don't hold that against.
Right, but I, well, we don't have much businesses around. So I.
You could use a town vet though. I think they do pretty well here, but anyway, go ahead.
So I saw the process that Mitch did with Mechanic Falls. Um, and so a couple of thoughts, just kinda breaking off of that, is, Mitch had, if I understood correctly, two sets of questions. One set for the initial interview, a second set of questions for the second interview, um, that he labeled as more difficult. So I think there is benefit to having somebody from the town and from the employees being in that second interview. Not necessarily the max, like, we're talking about a minimum representation of the select board in the initial round. Perhaps it's a minimum representation of the employees and the citizens in the second round. For two reasons. One, they get that insight of the tougher questions, and they may have insight how they compared to the first round of interviews. Secondly, everybody acts differently in each round of interview. So they may, you know, point out a personality characteristic that they noticed in the first interview that they're not seeing in the second interview. Um, that may point to either a character flaw or a character benefit. I also wanted to recommend, um, that even by doing it two-stage, if we do get to, um, you know, what's, what's the plan if people fall off? Because they took a job someplace else during our interview process? Because it gets to the final stage, and there's only one person at the final stage, or only two people at the final stage? Is it still the plan just to hire the one, because at least we liked the one? Um, or are we still gonna have a set of standards that they must meet? Or we all agree that we're just starting the process again? And my thought is, if you only get three qualified applicants, because the last time around, people fell off the wagon, so to speak, because they took jobs, what about if you do have just a minimal pool of qualified interviewees? Instead of having two interviews, you do just have one? That was all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting.
Thanks. I think, you know, I, I think our sense would be that, at least I would offer that, we're, we're gonna hire somebody that we think is, is qualified and can do the job and meets what we're looking for, and hopefully we find that person, whether it's out of a pool of three or a pool of thirty. And, but if we don't find that person, we keep going.
They'll never make it out of the first round. That's the whole point of the first round. If they don't, if they don't meet the requirements on the panels of the first round, then we gotta start from scratch.
We gotta keep searching. We gotta keep searching.
You're probably gonna fatter out, yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, at that point. You'll know if you've got viable candidates after that first round.
And, you know, and it's, you might, I mean, sometimes, you know, you might just have one, one gold nugget in a big pan of dirt, you know, but. We've seen some, you might have some little nuggets there, right?
I've seen that in history.
And, and again, if you get to the end game.
Yeah, I don't wanna take up their talk. Let them have one.
Well, I, I kinda agree with the numbers you're throwing out there. Um, I, I do wanna caution, as Mitch already kinda mentioned, um, about if you get three selectmen in any one of these committees, you actually form a quorum. So it's an official meeting, so to speak. So a caution about that. Maybe two selectmen works fine for those particular first meetings. I've only been on one committee, uh, and it wasn't necessarily for hiring of so, something else, but they had sixteen or more members. It was slightly different than hiring. It worked very well, because it was a different set of rules. But I think if we got to that, many people, this type of thing, from my experience, and I've been on, I don't know, half a dozen, two dozen over the years from different companies and things I've done, I think those numbers that you pass out are much more reasonable. And, and an odd number.
Yeah, I, I actually agree. I, I, and maybe I'm missing a city, but I, I actually think it's right only to have two, so you're not actually forming an actual meeting.
So you have a great mindset.
There's nothing that can bind in you by forming two there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's.
You can go say someone out.
It could be advantage either way.
It could be advantage either way.
So, um, before I.
I'm just looking at the perception, you know, if people in the public are, "That's a quorum, they shouldn't be doing that." And I wanna say, perception is reality around here.
Oh, yeah, that's the truth. So I wanna let, no, I wanna let Debbie in.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say, I think the fact that you're going to open it up to the community and possibly interview everybody who is, um, interested in being on the committee is really good, and I think people at the town meeting will recognize that's one of the boxes we're checking as far as, um, getting community input, so I think that's awesome. I also, I think it's, uh, fine with, um, the suggestion where the community is involved up, up front, but even if it's just the select board at the end without community or department, um, staff in there.
Yeah, I don't see them voting much for choice on that. Well, I'll.
But I mean, there is, there is goodness in people who are in the first round to just experience the second round. Not even just, uh, because they have a vote, which they don't have a vote at the tail end, but just understanding the process, hearing the discussion, the, how you guys come up with the decision.
Yeah, I mean, it might be.
It's informative, but.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, there's different, lots of different ways to handle it. You could invite, you could invite people that participated in, um, call it, you'll just call it round one, round two, let's say goodbye right now, but, um, people that participated in round one that are board members to, um, almost just observe any round two interviews, and then afterwards, you know, offer any thoughts or feedback or whatever. I mean, that's.
I love that. That's what I was gonna say.
Lot of value in observation, for sure.
Let me, uh, add something to that, because I think you're all coming to a pretty good place. The reason why I suggested three select board members is to legitimize the role and responsibility of the action that's going through the process. But more importantly, there are many people who would apply, but if they found out it was not considered a confidential or personnel matter officially, and word got back to their existing employer, you jeopardize their existing work. If in fact there were three members, three, three, and three, as was recommended. You've got your nine, plus a facilitator. You're all bound by the executive session requirements. That's a protection.
Yeah.
And if they don't want to lose their job because they didn't get another job, we won't be jeopardizing that. Your second idea of a format, once the screening has gone through, and, and I say screening, because even though the person may not be in front of you, "Oh, Mitch over in gray, I didn't realize he's interested," if the word gets out. That's the problem. So the second round interview will really be the first official round of just the select board, if that's your recommendation. But it came to us only after the citizen committee and the folk committee did it, and it was still an official action, and that's the only reason why I recommend that.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
I, I, I have to think of those things to protect the people who are yet to apply. But I think you've come out with a hybrid that is very workable. You just have to fight amongst yourselves, who's gonna be not sitting in the first round.
I was gonna say, that's what I'm like, who doesn't want to do it?
When you, when you put the committee together, the, the three, three, and three, you gotta have a timeframe of dates that they'll be, because that might make a difference on the person you chose. Can't meet those dates.
I know one of the thing, and I don't know if we can put the dates out ahead of time. One of the things that RSU did is like, we're playing on interviewing on these dates. And if you're not available on these dates, I'm sorry, but these are the dates. So what we, what we, what I don't think, one learning from last time that I think we would try to avoid is, there's no way we can coordinate interview schedules across like eleven people, eleven different people's schedules. But at the same time, we kinda have to have the requirement that if you're on that committee, you gotta be there for all of the interviews. You can't be there for six, but not for two, you know?
Absence of an emergency officer.
Well, yeah.
And that's why I was saying, if you heck, even, it's tough, like you said, but if you have some dates, you know, then that, you know, like, you threw out May and a lot of dates. Depending on what those dates were, if I was chosen to go to the committee, this date's in, I know I couldn't make it. So, you know, so I would say, "Well, I appreciate you putting me on it, but I can't."
Yeah, yeah, we'd have, we'll have to think about that, like, what kinda, and that's kinda how RSU did it.
That's right, that's what I was saying, my wife was part of their last hiring process with the new superintendent. And it's essentially, these are going to be the dates, are you available?
Right.
You could probably put that.
No, I think we can build that, because if we say, because we're gonna have a deadline for when the applications are due, and then you can build off that for when the interviews will be scheduled.
My, realistically, I'm assuming that Saturdays are the only real day that everyone probably has off. And it doesn't interfere with their work schedule. Otherwise, you know, are you? And I may be wrong, but, you know, what's the best opportunity? If you want to be a citizen, uh, considered for this committee, do you have Saturdays in the month of May open? That makes sense to me, so that, well, no, they're going out of town.
Well, what I, what I would get at is, we've done this in the past, and most citizens, um, if you select a date, and a lot of the candidates that we've had in the past, it was typically in the evening hours.
If you wanna do evening hours, that's fine too.
We could run a date program, right?
No.
Yeah.
So always.
I'm flexible enough to go whatever you design. Because these interviews that are being screened by citizens with the other members.
No, I just don't wanna create the false.
It might be, it might be that we say you need to keep Wednesday and Thursday mornings in May open.
Yeah, and I.
If that's what you want, that's fine too.
But I think you make it so restrictive, like, hey, you gotta have Tuesday and Wednesday all day for this particular time. Then, then, then the impact on the community is much less.
You bring up a good point, because I know we've done interviews of a large amount of people in a single day, like an eight-hour session, and the interviewers were exhausted at the end of it. So one whole round of, say, forty people coming through in one day is just kinda crazy. You might, if you do it the multiple nights in a week, then bang, you know.
The ones, the one.
Five or eight out every night, and then, and then you get at the end of the week and summarize, and then you're into the final round the following week or something like that.
Can I, if we get, if we get forty-five, do we think it'd be a good idea for Mitch to do the initial call?
That's a good point.
Me, me the bad guy.
MMA did, that was part of what they did last time, is that they, we still, they still sent them all.
But then they.
We got them, but they said, you know, this is what we think, you know, you're, even, and they were very conservative, like, even remotely viable. You know, they really only filtered out the like, yeah, no, not even close.
Yeah, yeah, some of it, just made up that case.
So you look like you got something to say with that?
I, I'm just thinking, you know, there was a lot of talk of citizen input, and by doing that, you're taking out one level of citizen input. And so I agree that that, I, I personally, uh, whether on the board or not, would not have a problem with that, and, and, and would be okay with that. My, my concern is, one of the things we heard at candidate's night at, at the town meeting was citizen input. And I think that is one level of citizen input that you're taking away.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would agree, but I would also disagree. So if you have somebody that you, kinda like we did with MMA, and, and similar to what we're doing currently with our interim town manager, that is, that has essentially been tasked to find us our next manager.
Yes.
They will it down to fifteen, whatever. They will it down to fifteen, whatever candidates that may be, as long as the citizens get a crack at everybody that we're interviewing, I don't, I don't think we're really shortchanging them in any shape or form. Because a citizen, a layperson, even myself, who's been on this, I don't know how long I've been sitting here, but, you know, I don't know the things that he knows, and most citizens don't know the red flags. That's why we incorporated MMA in the last time, and that's why we're trying to incorporate Mitch this time, because there's just, there's just so much minutia that could come in that it just, you know, you could spend that panels, you could, they could spend two nights reviewing the applications that Mitch could have been basically, um, got out of the mix before they even got there.
Okay, now the confusion has just set in.
Yeah, I know, I, I'm, I'm there already.
Let, let's break this down.
I'm not confused, I just, I have another one.
Yeah, sure.
I was gonna talk about, go ahead.
If I hear correctly, the select board is more than pleased to have three of their members along with three of our employees and three of our citizens, where they may be, conduct an initial interview process. Now, let me back up. Are you willing to go through the application process for those citizens who wanna be on this review? And let those citizens and the interim manager call out the good ones from the bad ones, if you will. I hate to use that term.
Yeah, no.
I just think.
It's on that.
So that you've got, whether you have eighteen, or twenty-five, or thirty, the three citizens, or four citizens, whatever you decide, and the manager effectively calls. They become the, the initial call. Now, here's the group right here, it's in the file, you can look at it anytime you want. But here's the group that they're now working with, then we go ahead with three to call the fifteen down to the top six, and that's when you all get involved at that point after the top six. Is that something that you're looking at?
Yeah, and, and, and I was gonna throw something else out there, that even though that initial call might throw some out, that even the larger com- the committee, when it gets together and walk at them one more time, if, if there's an extra person you wanted to bring in out of the pile, almost, almost like a save.
A save.
Phone a friend. I'm, I have a, I have a question about the objective of that.
Not that that initial phase won't be accurate, I'm just saying, but it gives, it gives it the.
Is the object, would the objective of that initial pass-through be to determine the list of people to bring in for a first interview? Or is the objective to screen out the people that not even remotely would be considered for a first interview? And then the larger committee reviews after the initial screening to determine the first round interviews?
The latter.
Okay, then I'm okay with it.
The former, at this point, what I'm hearing, and, and, and let me try to give it to you in real time. Select board of the town dorm, looking for applicants who would like to be on the initial screening committee of applications for the town manager position. If you are interested and have available on Wednesday and Thursday nights, please fill out the application, turn it in. We get twenty-five applications for citizens who wanna be on that committee. Let's just deal with that right now. How do you cull those down to a number that you want to work with the interim manager when we finally get the real applications for the town manager position? I'm very distinct, how do you cull down twenty-five citizen applications to get to a number that you want to act as a screening committee with the manager?
You said we were gonna interview all of them.
Right.
Okay, so you want, so that means on a Wednesday and a Thursday night, or Saturday, whatever you choose, that's when we interview them. Sorry, Mitch, you can't make the meeting, we will have to make the decision without your.
Right, right.
Okay, just so we understand, how many do you want on that? Ultimately, you're looking for three, four, five, six, or seven citizens.
Oh, wait, 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 I don't, I don't know. I don't envision, I don't envision citizens being on the committee that picks the citizens to be on the committee. That's a.
My mistake. My mistake.
So I think, I think the, um, the first thing, so I think the first step is, we send out, we solicit applications. The board reviews applications for the committee from citizens. And, and I don't know, are we gonna have staff do an application too, or, or are we gonna like?
Just ask them.
Just ask it, just ask.
Just ask.
All right, so citizens fill out the application, and, um, we get however many we get, we interview them all, and then, then to me, it's an executive session board conversation on who are the three out of all the people we just interviewed that are gonna get appointed to the committee? Anybody?
Yeah.
No, that sounds ridiculous.
Yeah.
Select three, so now you, you make two.
Well, that was the only thing I was gonna disagree with, so the, and, and, well, I mean, sometimes we have a lot of interest in this stuff, sometimes we have minimal interest in this. Um, I can't remember last time, but, you know, I don't wanna cap it at three and five people apply. If five people apply, let's just put the five people on.
Oh, I disagree, cause we don't, we wanna keep the, we don't, we wanna, we kinda wanna keep the overall committee, I think we said, to like maximum like eleven or so, cause if we just, I don't wanna just throw two on, just, just to throw two more on.
If we're gonna throw two on, I think it should be employees.
We already had the employees on.
Well, I, I'm not, yeah. I think we need to be a little bit disciplined about, you know, we've kinda identified that, you know, three board members, three from the, uh, from staff, three from the community, and, and much, you know, we, we pick from what we are gonna pick from, and that's, that's what we end up with.
Okay, so the number's three, is that?
Well, that's, that's, I think that's what we've been talking about, that's what, that's kinda where, where we've been.
So, three citizens will be selected out of the application pool by you, the board. And once that happens, they're sworn to secrecy, and they're acting on behalf of the board. They become part of the three, six, nine, who will then go through the applications for the town manager position.
Right, got it. Yeah, clear?
And they will make their recommendations accordingly. And we're talking evenings as opposed to a weekend?
And, and we need to be specific about their recommendation, and the output of that is a list of potential first interview, uh, candidates. It's not the actual list of first round interviews, it's the, to be considered by the larger committee, including the staff and the board, for potential first round interview.
I'm confused, the lar- the lar- we have, we have the, the nine, the nine plus Mitch going through the applications.
Yeah, so, no, no, see, that's, I think what he's saying is that the, the initial screening, like the, cause at first we talked about, let's just have Mitch do the initial screening, and you raised a point about citizen involvement. Then, so Rich threw out, uh, Mitch threw out the idea of, well, let's have just Mitch and just the three citizens, so the four of them do the initial screen. The output of that would be the pool of potential first round interviews that the larger committee would review.
I'm with you now.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it.
I love this.
You need a flow chart.
Yeah. I do want to use the flow chart.
I was just about to say.
Get yourself care, phase one is to get citizen involvement, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Make your applications out, there'll be a few questions on there. You, as a group, are gonna take all those applications. You're going to actually interview all of those people, whether it be five, ten, twenty, or thirty citizens, whatever the case may be. If it's that many, then you've got an interested party, but you're only gonna select three from that to be the representative citizen group. Once those three have been selected, you're then amongst yourselves going to look at all of the applications for the town manager position, am I correct?
The three, the three plus you.
Three plus me, plus you. And we're gonna put them really into two groups.
Right, yeah.
No, maybe and yes.
Yep.
Once those have been called out, maybe in the S to, to, to whatever, goes to the three, three, and three.
Yep.
Yes.
Three, three, and three will look at those and cull them down to top, whatever. And at that point, the citizens are done, or do you wanna keep them straight through to the end?
Well, wait, well, at that point, we, at that point, we've only identified the first round interviews. And then, the larger committee would participate in the first round interviews, so they would be present, and even, um, ask questions in there. Although it should be noted, though, I think we're talking about, people aren't gonna be able to bring their own questions. We need to ask the same questions of all the candidates, that you will, you will script out.
That's synchronized, if you watched it, everyone's name was on the question, and they had to go around in the same order.
Correct. So that, so then, um, coming out of that, um, first round will be, like, that committee will, after going through the interviews, that larger committee will then pass on to the board the list of whatever it is, ideally, we wanna get it down to two to three, probably, ideally, three finalists. And then the board would, uh, interview the three finalists, potentially with the citizens that were part of round one in the room to observe. Um, and then, once the interviews are over, offer any, like, new insights, or things they changed their mind about, or, you know, whatever, whatever.
So the citizens really get to monitor soup to nuts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
The only thing the citizens, the only thing the citizens are not present for is the executive session discussion with the board on who to actually make the offer to.
I'd like to offer to write this procedure up, I don't know if you guys have town procedures.
I think he's doing that, but.
But I mean.
Why don't you write it up?
I will write it up. I mean, we should have an official hiring strategy document that we're gonna follow, and that way, you'll have it on file for the next time.
Thank you.
For anybody.
Hopefully it will gather a lot of dust before we even.
Please.
The board pretty happy with that?
Yep.
So my, just. The board decides who comes in for the first round of interview?
No, no, the, the, the larger committee, the larger committee decides. Yes, so with three board members on it.
The board, the.
Committee nine.
Total, he doesn't really get involved.
So Mitch had it right. And typically, when you're, if you've done this before, you were, the very first time you look at all the applications, it's yes, no, maybe, right? And so, the first stage with just Mitch and the, um, three citizens is they're, they're getting the nos. Like, and get, calling out the nos.
Getting those out.
And then, the yes, the yes and maybe goes forward to the larger, you know, nine-person committee. And that, that committee then goes through the yeses and maybes and determines who's gonna get an interview, right? It might be all of them, you know, um, and then, after those first round interviews, that committee will, um, select the finalists, and it then gets passed on to this board. Then we, and we will do the second round interview, um, but any of the citizens that were involved in round, or staff people for that matter, that were involved in round one, can be in the room to observe. Uh, we should talk about, is, is that an optional thing or a required thing? Like, would we be concerned that, like, like, for instance, if we made it optional, is it an issue that maybe some of the people that were there for round one observed, but others didn't? Like, does it have to be an all or none thing?
I'm trying to put myself in the position of the applicant who finally, you've, you've met, you like the applicant's portfolio, and then you're sitting in here, and if, with you, the executive, the board, and all of a sudden, you start discussing compensation and things of that interest. It starts flowing right away, you've gotta be very cautious there. With all due respect to the citizenry, that whole negotiation process has to be without citizen present. It's your final responsibility, you've gotta make sure there's a firewall there. What you're saying is, in the first round interview, you're giving the citizens who've really bought into this process an opportunity to observe your Q and A with that applicant, as I understand it. That's okay, thank you, Mitch, thank you, Joan, thank you, Gene, uh, we will get back to you at the end, at the end of our review process. They have witnessed the, the effort of their work has come to that point. You've got two or three that stand out, you wanna bring them back for a second interview. That's the first question I have for you, are the citizens now done? Cause now you're in the second interview.
Well, I think, I think we were saying, second interview, that they'd be allowed to observe, but after what you just said, I'm kinda, I'll be thinking that, um.
I think.
Could it be a thing where we leave when you get to the co- the negotiation part? Could it be a thing where they're here for the questions to be able to offer?
Sometimes it pops up by mistake.
Yeah, that's the thing, it's tough to control that, when you're in a, when you're in a finalist interview situation.
Yeah, it can go either way.
My, my comfort level at the moment, cause this is a new hybrid, so I have not as much comfort, but I agree that in round one interviews with the top three candidates, just from the parameters, you should be witnessing that, that's not a problem.
And not just witnessing, but participating.
Right.
Yeah.
Then, from that, they all go out the door, the citizens are saying, you know, Mitch, you know, folks, that one is a shiner, that one is a catfish.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's only here.
Yep.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the citizens' opinions.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you continue your executive session with the responsibilities that you have by statute. Who are you calling back for a second interview? Because by the time you're calling someone back for a second interview, either there are two who are that close together, or you've already made up your mind, and you're just proving that that's the person you want, and it trips very quickly into, you don't want them to leave without knowing that you're putting an offer on the table.
So the, the larger committee, you know, they participate in all the first round interviews, they provide their feedback, um, and hopefully at that point, it becomes like, it's obvious who the finalists are. But then, it's up to the board to determine the finalists that, that come in for a second, yeah.
I like the idea of.
The citizen said, when a public comment is, is not open right now, okay, this is board deliberation.
When it does give you as a board, and the citizens who are sitting here in that first round interview, the ability to say to the citizens after the candidates.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have a shiner, or do we have a problem, we need to go back and start over again?
Well, that's certainly part of the process, is for them not just to participate, but then offer their feedback and what they, what they think.
By the end of round one, with citizen input, they've given you some guidance that said, you know what? Candidate number two should be called back for a second interview, as far as we're concerned, the other two just, a lot of hot air, just didn't show us anything. And at that point, their job is done.
So they offer their, and it might be via, I don't know, it might be via official document or, or scorecard or something, but they offer, like, this is who, you know, they can offer individually who they think what are the finalists or whatever, and then that's just part of what we consider when we're, um, when we, when we decide who the finalists are to bring in for a second interview.
My, my, my intent behind this was to, I, you know, pardon for my own Kevin or talk, you guys were there, but in the past, especially for this particular position, because we kind of, um, subbed out the initial legwork and so forth, it was more we met, and then we pushed them to the panel, and then the panel came back to us with the final. I'd rather reverse.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, I think that's one of the learnings from last time, and that's what we're doing, so we're having the committee be involved up front versus on the back.
Tell us who you like, and then we'll go, we'll negotiate for it.
Exactly.
And there's no guarantee that the citizens' recommendations is the one that you finally make. You may see something about the other candidate that you prefer over what the citizens have talked about. That's a fight that I can't resolve, but at least there's been participation up to that point.
And I think you want, um, I think you want all five board members involved in who the finalists are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Because quite frankly, any one of you goes home and said, I wasn't there, they went ahead and made a choice, and that person's the worst thing in the world, and you don't want that. The process now has, is basically, you're in the fishbowl, the citizens are in the same fishbowl with you. And everyone else is watching what's going on, up to the point where the final recommendation comes in negotiations, and that's your job.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's the final high.
Agree, agree, agree.
Yeah, yeah. But it opens up a whole opportunity for citizens. They may not agree with the final decision, and I'm sorry, but the final decision rests.
Well, the, the, the citizens, I mean, won't even know who the three finalists are, cuz that happens. In the executive session, right? The only, the only thing the citizens or anybody will know, what, once, once the first round of interviews are over. And that committee has provided their feedback to the board. The next thing anybody's gotta know is who is hired.
That's not the way the conversation was going before, am I allowed to ask a clarifying question, just because I think we're not all. Understanding that in-between step the same way.
Okay, alright.
So my, what I was understanding when we were going through it before was that the panel of nine was going to decide. Who was going into the second round of interviews, and then, I'm okay with all of us being out of the second round interview. If the panel of nine decides who goes into the second round.
Yeah, and I think that's, that was the change as we were talking through it was, cuz you're right, that's where it was. But as we heard more from Mitch and as we talked through it, um landed on that it's actually up to the board. To determine who the finalists are with.
That you would be.
That would, that was a big complaint um that I heard from the first round of hiring a town manager. Is that the recommendation from the employees and the citizens. Got, they felt got ignored for the last round of interviews.
There wasn't, well, there wasn't any recommendation at that point, cuz the citizens didn't get involved until the second round last time.
Okay, then the third round of interviews, but the last, the, the, the last step. They felt like their recommendation was ignored for who to, to go on to the last step of the board to decide who is hired.
Yeah, that, that wasn't part of the process last week, or the job.
The, the way I envisioned this happening, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is that the. Either the, the, by citizens, I assume we're talking about citizens and employees.
Yeah, 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 that, yeah. But guys, guys, I gotta reel this in, because this is a board deliberation, and we've been very open with the public comment aspect of it. But we're the ones that ultimately have to make this decision.
And, and so, then, the, the six, we'll call them non-board members of that initial panel. Would then come to us in an executive session and say, and make recommendations?
Well, anything, anything, any discussion about um. People and employment and job, if, if there's, it is under some umbrella of confidentiality. And it, it probably would be executive session because there'd be three board members present, and um that would require going into.
I, I understand, but I guess I'm, I'm. If, if the, the issue was the voices being heard, and I guess, if I'm not a member of that, that nine-person committee. Would I be hearing recommendations coming from the three board members who are, and only hearing their perspective or, or what was, what was said at the meeting? Or would I be hearing from all nine members before we make that final recommendation?
Well, I think my assumption is it would be all nine, that you hear from the committee on, you know, we did the interviews and. This is who we, you know, are recommending for, you know, final, you know, as finalists.
And that, that to me takes care of the issue of not being heard.
Yes, yes, the actual, but the actual decision of who the finalists are. Now, it's very likely the larger board would simply like go, yeah, that sounds, you know, that sounds right, especially since three of the board members. Will have been on that committee and participating in that, but from a pure um, you know, process. Authority to make the decision aspect, that it probably, as Mitch was saying, it does need to come from the board.
Oh, and, and I agree, I'm just trying to take into consideration the, the, the voices being heard, and I think, I think that plan. To me, again, from the outside, if I were on the outside looking in, that would take care of that concern.
Yeah, the only, the only real difference between the two scenarios, as I understand it, is that, is. Where the actual like vote, if you will, on who the finalists are is taking place, so it's like. You know, the committee still has the same role and they're putting forward, we think A, B, and C should be the finalists. The only difference is that that's not a binding vote, you know, conceivably, it could come. Back to the larger board and the board could make a different decision, you know, I think that's highly unlikely. Or the board could say, you know what, we feel like, we only really need to interview two of these people cuz we don't think the third one is, you know, viable. Or, or whatever, I'm just saying that it's, that it's possible.
And, and I'm thinking that the larger group is gonna probably cull us down pretty good, you're not gonna end up with fifteen people into the second round. You're gonna end up with.
No, 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 because I think the most important is will be give us the top three.
Right, exactly. You're at three people in this bubble here, and then you're gonna still have the, the, the um. Folks from the town involved in that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you'll, so you, you're, you're really, you're really at one person at that last, well, one or two people at that last interview cycle. When you get to the end. Out to, out to the second, right.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, now is that point in time where scrambled eggs are looking pretty good. I wanna be very crystal clear so that when we all walk out of the room, we're all the same, and I think it's been a heck of a great discussion. So. Step one. Citizen applications to participate with the select board and staff. Citizen applications have to be turned, turned in if they wanna be considered, and all citizen applications will be interviewed. That's what you've all said. If the citizen says no.
Josh wants the eighty application rules into that.
But, quite frankly, it's a five or ten minute deal, and let's assume there are twenty-five people. Alright, let's assume there are twenty-five, and we deal with it over two nights, if we, if we extend to a third, if we have it. But that gives you three citizens. That gives you three staff members, and amongst yourselves, you have three select. So that's phase one, we all agree with that. That's important because it starts getting murky after that. That group of nine is going to take this whole basket full of applications for a town manager. No, no, I think it would be a group of six with, with the.
Four.
It's just the three.
Three and one.
Three, the three citizens.
Want me to write it on the like word as we go?
So step number two.
They pick the nos.
Committee plus Mitch. Pick the no. Takes all of these hundred and fifty thousand of them. And foils them down to the top dozen.
No, 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 it's the, no, it's, no, it's the yeses and maybes.
Yeses and maybes, okay, and then make it go to the no. Okay, whatever that number is, these are the yeses and the maybes.
Yeah, there's no number on it at that point, right?
And these are the nos. Thank you. Step number three. We have the yeses and the maybes, and who's sitting here at the table?
The, the committee of nine, three, 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 and they, they will determine of the yeses and maybes. Who to bring in for a first interview. And then they will actually conduct those first interviews.
Just to re-clear, when you say the committee of nine plus Mitch?
Yes, 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 thank you.
I have no votes, so that's.
But, but you were included in the, in the committee of, of four.
The interviews of those yeses and maybes. And out of that group, how many does the select board want for a group when they're down to? The yeses and the maybes, there are twenty-five of them. We meet on two and three nights again, or a weekend, whatever we did, we met. How many do you want turned over to you as a recommendation? You want the yeses, you no longer want the maybes, and how many of the yeses do you want, assuming we have got?
I think that depends. I would be for five. I, I, I would have a hard time putting a specific number.
Yeah, I'd say five.
So you want the committee to do the best they can, say here are the top ones that we think you should look into.
Well, is the, again, I'll go back to the objective, is the objective of the first round interviews, like, so I see. When the yeses and maybes go to the committee, I, I, I see an additional screening that they do. Say, okay, of the yeses and maybes, they, you know, there's probably going to be. As usually, like some sort of like, you know what, let's, let's say there's twenty-four of them, you know what? We really think that there's really like nine here worth interviewing, okay? And so they bring in the nine, they do the first interview with nine, so that's, so there's the second cut, right? We've gone from the big bucket with the yes, nos, maybes, we've gone from the yes, maybe bucket, and then. That committee goes through that, and they say, you know what, there's nine in here that we wanna bring in for a person. Then after the first interview, I think what we've been saying is that ideally what would come out of that is who are the three finalists.
Who makes that decision at that step for the three?
Well, that's, that's what we've just been talking about, they make their recommendation.
Nine plus one?
For the three, you know, we think after interviewing nine candidates out of this pool. That, you know, our recommendation is that these three be considered finalists. The formalization of that and is real, is up to the board, but, you know, it's gonna be a heavy consult from the.
Okay, let me stop you there, cuz that, that's a friction point that I'm picking up on.
No, no friction, we're all good.
So, you get nine, you pick the top three in your scenario, you may say the top four, but you pick the top candidates. At that point, thank you citizens.
Yes.
Yes.
And we go to the fifth step, interviews.
Finalist interviews.
And that's the final interviews, I say final, it's the second interview really for those individuals.
Interview for the people.
Interview finalists. And from that, job offer or start over.
Yeah, and it, yeah, and it may not be. It could be a start over, or it could be broaden the pool of, you know what, we asked them to pick three, but they really had five that they liked. So maybe we, then we go down to the next two, you know, you may not always have to go all the way back to the beginning. It just depends on what you're. You might have two decent ones behind and give you the three, right?
Hopefully they'll have that feeling.
Thanks for the grid notes.
Please write them up and send them up again. I have five steps.
Yeah, and maybe three's not, maybe three's not the number, it might be.
I have five too.
We could say, we could say maximum, I'm, I'm comfortable saying maximum of five, that's it, that's right.
For, for the final.
Yeah, so the committee should recommend a maximum of five. Might only be for, for second, it might only be three, like, don't feel like you have to do five just to do five, right? If, if, you know, it could be, it might only be two that, that's worth going to a final interview. But I will say, I'll go and say, you know, I don't wanna interview just one again, even if it's, cuz, you know, perception for no other reason.
These five steps, I believe, bring your taxpayer citizens into the process. But still leave you the statutory requirements for the final two.
Yeah, I would agree.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Well, you, you say that like we didn't wanna do it.
I know that this was painful and the back and forth, and I know that this doesn't usually happen, and it is not setting a precedent, this is a really big deal. No, this is a really big deal, so we genuinely appreciate this.
I was gonna say, I don't agree, I hold it as a precedent.
I don't know what that is.
So at this point, you have agreed on the process. And I think it'll have to be written up, gonna compare it with your notes again, and I wanna email it out so that we all are working the same. Sheet going forward, and then in the meantime, you've given me the get-go to prepare the advertisements. Share that information, and also to prepare an application process for citizen participation. And do you give me the authority to deal solely with the chair, who may want one-on-one to make sure that it's the way you think it should, cuz I'm gonna. The citizen application will have one or two situational questions, we wanna know what you're bringing to the table.
And typically oftentimes, and, and this is perfectly permissible under FOA is. Like if I, if there's a statement that's coming out from the board or something like that, oftentimes I draft a statement, or if there's a document needs to be reviewed. I send it up to the board, and I say, let me know what you think, if you have any feedback, and you do that individually, so that's not a big group email. Um, and that, that's how we, you know, stay, you know, above board with the FOA stuff, cuz. Even though, it doesn't, it, what it does, it doesn't make it an illegal meeting via email. And, but all that stuff is still public and subject to FOA and all that, so it's, but it just makes it so that we can. Um, do logistical stuff like that, without having to actually call a physical meeting here at the town office.
Mitch, could you uh present your question again? In regards to authorizing you and Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, that in fact, once I have prepared all of the necessary. Documents for this whole process, trying not to exclude anything. I want to then pass it on to our chair to have it sanitized, and what I think I can do is send it out to all of you. And to avoid a FOA application problem, unless you have an objection to say received, okay. Nothing else. Otherwise, we're conducting a meeting, I have to keep going back for the.
Oh, I, I was content with your initial one where I thought you were asking to authorize as you set it up and get the approval from the chair.
If that's what you want, that's even more efficient, because it's gonna take some time to put this together, and I may do phone call because it's sometimes quicker. And just be prepared, be prepared to have some more meetings in the month of May, uh in April and May as needed. Cuz I also wanted to see to you all some hints on how to be elected officials. Go through the RSA's.
So what you're saying is, my first meeting, you're making me miss my kid's first school concert, and then you're gonna try to make me miss my kid's college graduation?
I can guarantee it's the first of many, and if you need someone to blame, blame me.
You haven't known my kid yet.
And if you are really upset, you can fire me.
I would never make you that out.
Hey, you always keep in mind, there's a reason why there's five of us. We like to have, we like to have a board of all five, but there, there, we do understand.
We all have things that we all had in this.
Well, congratulations to your community. And his involvement.
I told Kim, Kimberly, yeah, no way we're going to nine fifteen tonight, but we're act, we're, we're in danger, we're gonna run out our, block on our reporting. Alright, so seven point two on the agenda was that the judgment, what, what do you need from the board with regard to that?
The legal settlement between Mr. Dean Smith and the town, or any violations that we recorded in the, in the Scottsdale County Court.
And this was the settlement where, and this was uh coming out of executive session last time. The board voted to assess the fine of twenty-five thousand dollars plus the fees.
And uh we wanna cash that check and. Maybe run for it, let him get his permits underway that he should.
Alright, so the motion you need again is?
To authorize the town manager to execute and complete. The settlement agreement. With Mr. Dean Smith.
Alright, so the board would entertain, entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to uh execute uh the judgment. Agreement that the board approved uh last week against Mr. Dean Smith.
I'll second, I'm so moved.
So moved by Mitch, seconded by Todd, uh any discussion?
I just ask if it's appropriate for us not having been there at the meeting, the prior meeting, and not knowing, I'm a little uncomfortable voting out.
Well, if, um, it's a, the answer to your question is yes, it's appropriate, but you don't have to vote. Um, we can pass it with the, the three of us, um, uh, that, that's fine. But basically we're, basically we're, it's a formality to allow the um, the signing of the agreement. That the board and the um, subject of the judgment have agreed to.
So, so it's already okay?
It was already.
This is not a process that's starting, it's the end of.
Right, right, we're stuck. Right, right, which is not the eye. Yeah, it's all we're doing. Any further discussion?
Unanimous in this case?
Um, no. Is there any objection?
Three or two abstained.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, we have five of all.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, would entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Motion to accept the consent agenda as written. Second, Todd seconds, all in favor?
I'll abstain.
Okay.
As well.
Okay, so we have three, three in favor, new board members abstained on that one. Alright, upcoming meetings, um, I am gonna, um. Suggest that we still meet next Tuesday, the twelfth, on our regular night, uh, cuz we're gonna have some business to, to do. Uh, to keep this process moving forward in the town manager search. Any objections to that? Okay, alright, so we'll meet here next Tuesday, um. Do we need an executive session tonight? I don't, we put that on the agenda just because it's oft, it's oftentimes something, but.
No.
Yeah.
We do, okay.
No, no, I said, yeah, no, I don't think we do.
Yeah, no, I do.
I thought it was for the agreement.
But that has to be done in public session.
Exactly.
Right.
This, this is personnel matters. The agreement will be personnel.
Alright, then, um, if we don't meet that, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Which moves.
Second.
Todd seconded, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.